All rise please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no bounds.
Good evening everyone, welcome. Before the start of tonight's meeting, we met one young lady for interview for one of our board's commission positions. Before we begin the regular part of our meeting, the board would like to express our condolences to the Kim family and to Stevens friends for the tragic loss of his life over the weekend. And we heartily hope that the pain passes in time and it's replaced by the memory and joy of his life. Okay, sorry to do that, but it was an important thing for us. So may we please then pass on to the retirement and happy time for Sergeant Mark Wetmore. Sergeant?
Thank you everybody for coming, I'm surprised. More stunned than anything else, I guess.
So maybe chief, and chief, former chief, current chief, any other?
Chiefs.
Any other chiefs?
Chiefs.
Not Indian.
Anyway, so this guy like accosted me in the dressing room on Sunday, so it's a good, it's a good time for him to be going, because obviously he needs to go now, but we will miss you, we will miss you. I remember him first from many years ago, like twenty years ago at Oktoberfest. And just a real pleasure to work with you in that volunteer capacity. Actually, I was a volunteer.
I was not, I was getting paid annually.
But nonetheless, you were really supportive and took a great egg about all that, sir. But that's just fine. I will miss you.
Thank you.
And he's one, he's just one of the squad who hasn't given me a ticket yet. Everyone else can wait. Anyway, today we are presenting to you Mark Wetmore, the fifteenth day of December 2015, by our board, Doylestown Township supervisors acknowledging your retirement on December 31st, 2015. Are you still here for a few days?
Oh yeah, got about eight more shifts to go.
Well, we thank you for your thirty, thirty-seven, thirty-seven years of dedication. To all the people of Doylestown Township and to the Doylestown Township Police Department. I am the people of Doylestown Township, but this runs the police department. This is for you, and that's a little baggie that goes with it. And this is a gift card for you. If you want. Anybody want to say anything?
I do.
Okay, good. Do you want me to move?
No, I'd just like to thank the board for allowing me to take a couple minutes to talk about Sergeant Wetmore. But before I do that, I'd like to thank my staff, my current staff, for everything you guys do, I really do appreciate it. And it's great to see so many retired guys and people that have come back who used to work with you, to come back to support you.
It's stunning.
Yeah, I thought, I thought so too. Seriously though, Sergeant Mark Wetmore, I thought a lot about what to say about you today. And I have to admit that you are, throughout your career, what you have given back to this community is by far one of the most, with the exception of Steve White standing next to you. You've never sought to be in the limelight, you've never looked forward to getting commendations, but you've never wanted that medal on your chest, but that is not the true measure of a man in his career. A community can be defined as a group of people with common interests and characteristics living in a common location. And a member can be defined as someone or something that belongs to that group. You truly define the term "community member." You were born in Lansdale in 1955. You grew up in the Central Bucks community your entire life. You graduated from Central Bucks West High School. You went on to college and graduated from Indiana University of Pennsylvania, where you were fortunate enough to come back and get a career here in Doylestown Township in March of 1978. To think that in 1970 this police department was first adopted, you were the, from my records, you were the seventeenth full-time police officer in the history of this police department. Whether you know it or not, there's been fifty-eight police officers that have come and gone during your tenure.
Wow.
That doesn't surprise me.
No, I don't believe it was, but maybe. In 1983, you were promoted to the rank as sergeant, and you continue to serve in that position today. Upon your retirement at the end of this month, you will have thirty-seven point eight years of service, which is the second longest tenure in the history of the police department.
Missed it by two months, something like that.
Ninety-five days shy of the record.
By this guy right here.
To me, that's what being a community member is all about. Being a sergeant for over thirty years, you've had to deal with many different personalities and adjustments to change. No two supervisors are exactly alike. Many supervision handbooks tell us that a good supervisor gets work done through other people. You have demonstrated that beyond your means. By looking around the people today, I think everybody in this room at one time or another has worked for you or with you. And you have given each and every one of them something. And you should be proud of that. You've demonstrated a level of temperament that your officers have responded to for over thirty-three decades. And that goes to show with the people here in the room. You're the son of a retired police officer who worked in the area, and although you speak very little of him, I know he influenced you greatly. I've had family members that were also former law enforcement officers in this police department, and I can remember as a kid hearing stories that included you and the fun that you had while working here over the years. I can remember you as a kid, literally.
Thank you. Maloney?
I have countless number of funny stories that I've heard through the Pachati clan and all the people that have come through about the things that you've accomplished here. Terry, thank you for your sacrifices over the years, and although Mark has given countless hours to this community, I am confident to say that you and your son have always been number one. Mark, I'd like to congratulate you for your thirty-seven point eight years of service. But before you go, it is time that we retire this cup.
I had to break out my secondary one tonight.
And that I've reached deep into my pockets. Oh, and have upgraded real.
That's disgusting.
I've been in a grave cup that's black on the outside to hide the stains. Can I just, quick show of hands of the officers that have since come and gone during Mark's tenure? Raise your hand. And now, Brian, you're not gone yet. Tell you story, but I thank you.
I also do. It's very nice that you guys all came tonight. Didn't have to, but that's.
With that being said, I think this might be the first time in the history of the police department that we're going to have a, I'm going to make a request to the board shortly to replace you. I don't know how that's going to work, but we're going to try.
I've already talked to Monica.
So I would ask that you guys please stick around to show your support to your newest officer, who's got hopefully thirty-plus years in her. Thank you.
God forbid.
Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to say a few words too about Mark. In 1976 to '77, I spent a year as acting chief of police, reorganized the accident files, wrote a highway safety grant that hired four officers, two police cars, and a lot of other things. Mark was the first one under that grant that we hired. And it's been a remarkable run. To be a sergeant from January 1st of 1983 until now is stunning. That's one of the hardest jobs in a police department. I won't say it's easy to be chief of police, but it's easy to be chief of police. But it's hard to run a squad and be out there running all the shifts and doing all the things. And what Mark has been able to do, I really honor him and congratulate him on what he's given to the citizens of Doylestown Township and what he's meant to the whole police department and the history of the department. It's not by accident that a lot of former officers are here in their respect for not only the police department, but most importantly, for Mark Wetmore. So we're all here to congratulate you.
Okay, is this an opportunity for cake?
No.
No? Okay, would you mind just hanging for a few minutes? We have a couple.
Would you move that up now?
Yeah, let's move that all up now. Chief, you have something else you want to take care of now?
I think I might want to make them wait.
Oh.
I'm kidding, alright. I would request that the board of supervisors appoint Monica A. Malatesta as a police officer to the department and to conduct a swearing-in on January 4th, 2016, at the board of supervisors' reorganizational meeting. Ms. Malatesta has successfully completed all phases of the testing process. The appointment will fill the vacancy of the twenty-first form police officer position created by the retirement of Sergeant Mark Wetmore. Monica is thirty-six years old and resides in Doylestown with her husband Dave and her two children, Morgan and Mason. I got that correct, right? She's a graduate at Upper Dublin High School, Temple University Police Academy, and has been employed as a deputy sheriff in Bucks County for the past fourteen-plus years and has part-time experience with the Central Bucks Regional Police Department. Respectfully request that a vote be taken and she be appointed for a swearing-in on January 4th.
I'll make that motion, is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Malatesta, why don't you come on up?
I would like a picture of the newest and the.
That's what I agree.
Most tenured.
I agree, I agree. Can we get a picture, somebody?
Yep, chief's got to get it.
Is this one good side?
Can you share it, please? Share it with us? Will you share it with us?
Sure.
Yes, thank you. Okay, welcome. Congratulations, I think it's time for a commercial break.
Stealing my cutback, I still have about five shifts to go. Chief? It was, red, red with clear plastic and somebody broke the handle off it.
It's ground water, that's all you're drinking. Guys, thanks for showing up, I already. Thank you, Mark.
Have fun back there. Congratulations.
He's getting a pension call now. He's going to the pension board, Mark's been here for thirty years almost, does he?
No, we need you, chief, we need you.
Go back for your bonding moment.
Board excuse us, the chief to go party.
Alright, thank you.
In case we need you, don't go too far.
I'll be around.
Okay, thanks.
I can hurry back if necessary.
Yeah, don't do that.
Thank you.
Okay, any visitors or public comments tonight? Announcements, we're going to be closed on Friday, December 25th. And we're going to be closed on Friday, January 1st. We're going to reorganize on Monday, January 4th at 4:00. And the auditors are going to reorganize on Tuesday, January 5th at 7:00. Our next meeting will be January 19th, 2016, at 7:00. And great gift ideas, ready? Movie tickets, ski tickets, benches, bricks, segments of trails, kids' castle playpieces, township mural print, contact administration offices for more information. Christmas tree drop-off, really, we have to do this now? Christmas tree, really? We don't have it, mine's not even up yet. Okay, Christmas tree drop-off can be dropped off at New Britton Road, entrance to Central Park, anytime between December 26th and February 14th. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of December 1st, 2015. Does everyone have a chance to review?
Yes, move to approve.
Second, any corrections or changes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, correspondences? None. Reports from the solicitor.
I have nothing we will not discuss later in the agenda, Madam Chairperson.
Chief, just, we did the chief's item. Mr. Engineer?
Nothing at this time.
Manager?
Just in your packet is the information from the Cross Keys presentation that the Bucks County Planning Commission presented on December 3rd. It was a fascinating presentation and the goals that they, really three main goals that they're focused on is the appearance of the Cross Keys area, traffic flow, and pedestrian bicycle circulation. And they're going to continue, you have a lot of information of what they've accomplished with their DVR-PC grant. So that's all in your packet for informational purposes.
Okay, anybody having questions or comments about the Cross Keys project? Alright, anything else?
Yes, in your packet you have a memo, we attempted to sell the Showmobile through PSAT, and unfortunately we were unsuccessful, but we would like the opportunity to try to place a second ad, and if that is not successful, to move it to the gov bids.govdeals.
Don't we want to just sell it to the borough?
See if they're interested.
I have a question just regarding, like, do we have to sell it through PSAT or Gov Bid? No, you're just trying those avenues first.
Those are the largest, I mean, PSAT's with all the membership and everything, it's so large, we figured it's probably the easiest one.
Put it on Craigslist, just try it. Well, I mean, I'm just saying, could we? Why not?
Well, in Bucks County Association, and also I would put it through Bucks County, they just announced they're going to do something similar.
Just to, yeah.
Just do all avenues and see who bikes first. That's fine, that's what I was looking for.
And see if the borough's interested, you know?
Okay, sure.
Say, they don't have a performing arts place, yeah.
Alright, anything else?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, supervisors, I'm Ken, you want to start with the building update?
Yes, we will start with renovations, project update. You should have a handout in your.
Got it.
In your packet there, yes.
And there's another one updated on the table as well.
Oh, alright, thank you.
Yeah, I made, I submitted for the packet, but then we had a second meeting. So what we, where we were, where we are at, we had our second and third project team meetings on the 9th and the 14th of this month. And again, it was a small group. At the December 9th meeting, Chief Logan was with us, and on the 14th, Joe Phillips brought in Jim Linsky for, from the architect. And obviously, one of the main things we wanted to do is identify a process, how we can efficiently and quickly move this process along, again, building on all the hard work that the larger committee did earlier this year. The things we focused on were on site security and workflows. And when we talk about workflows, that's in two components. One is from a vehicle workflow, how do they come into the site and where they, where do you want to have access and/or not access, allow people have access to, but also people. And that could be people coming into the township building, it could be, how does the chief release prisoners in a safe, secure way? So we're talking about people, cars, and just how work flows through, through the facility. We hit pretty hard, all the space requirements again, we went, Stephanie had reached out to all the managers, and we went through them, we prioritized them, and we were able, we were successful in making some changes. So we're going through that and trying to make sure we weed out the stuff we don't need, but also recognize that this is, this facility's going to be around for a long time. So we want to make sure we have enough elbow room to be able to stay productive and efficient. Our next two meetings are set up for January 8th and January 22nd, which means we are in target to come back here on February 2nd with our recommendation to the board.
What time are your meetings on the 8th and the 5th?
Probably 9:00.
In the morning?
Yeah, yeah.
Are these open to the public?
They, we have not asked until we got a lot of stuff documented, but if there's someone that would like to attend, you certainly can attend.
Feel free.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anything else, Ken?
Yes, a number of items. Like first, to talk about EAC a little bit, I just wanted to give a advance warning to the supervisors and to the residents that in the next newsletter, we're going to announce that we want, eventually we'll be taking a survey, but this is just a communication, we're going to do the survey, on a community garden with the land that was preserved over by Lower State and the Parkway.
Yay.
They're going to at least reach out and see what the level of interest is. Once we see what that is, then we can say, then we can get into the, how does it work? How big are they, blah, blah, blah. But there's a lot of things to consider in this, as the team is finding out, because of parking and the traffic and water and how do you, how does all fit together?
Parking, traffic, water.
So it's a long, it's a long way to go, but our first step is to see what the level of interest is. For EAC committee, we had interviewed some candidates for that, and I would like to make a motion that Ann Woodbury fill that slot that we have for, starting in January of 2016.
I'll second that.
Alright, questions, comments? We'll call a question, all in favor of Ann Woodbury?
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Ann.
Congratulations, Ann. Anything else, Ken?
Yes. I would like to, and a lot of the residents may know, may not know, but the board knows, but I would like publicly to thank Lee Schwartz, chairman of Ways and Means. He will not be chair in January, and, oh my god, yes, surprise. But he's put a lot of hard work in, and I really enjoyed working with you, Lee, and on behalf of the board of supervisors, thank you for all your, your time and effort. You've come a long way. Good. Saying that, we also have two openings on Ways and Means in which we had interviewed, and I would like to make a motion, can I do both these together?
Sure.
Yeah, I would like to nominate Robert Salinek and Joe Delacant for the two open positions on the Ways and Means committee.
Was there a second? Second. Any questions, anybody? I'm going to call a question, all in favor of these two gentlemen?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
Yes? Aye. Okay, five minute. Okay.
That's all I got.
Okay, wow. Sean?
Well, I don't have too much to add that has been touched on. Stephanie talked about our North 611 corridor redevelopment plan. Lynn Bush from Bucks County, from Bucks County Planning Commission, and Dave Sebastian came actually this morning to our Bike and Hike meeting and gave a presentation, a summary presentation of that meeting. And I don't, Stephanie, do we have those, any of those drawings or plans available if anybody wants to see yet?
We just have the PowerPoint, which has pretty much what they presented, just the bigger drawings from the PowerPoint. And they took those with them.
Yeah, I mean, it's still very early, but it was interesting. And I'll take the opportunity to thank as well anybody from Park and Rec, our senior task force, as well as Bike and Hike, everybody comes out, we give a lot of time and that, and we appreciate all their help. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Brian?
Nothing from you tonight.
Just one comment, I don't know if it was mentioned, that the reason Lee is not going to be chair is not malfeasance or misfeasance or anything like that.
Or non-feasance. Or non-feasance.
He's moving, so, just wanted to clear.
People are wondering.
And I'm done, thanks.
Well, Lee, I am going to miss you. You have been a pain in my butt for a long time now, but it's been a good pain, and I'm going to, I'm going to really, there's going to be like this, this absent thing happening with my butt now, because you're not there to kick it. Thank you very much for all.
That sounds good either.
Thank you for, no, thank you for all the hard work and your attention, your commitment, and you've just been a valuable asset to the people of Doylestown Township, thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Absolutely, absolutely. I would like to ask the board to consider Andrew Miller as a new member to our park board, is someone we interviewed, and we do have an opening on the park board, so I would like to make that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So Mr. Miller is on here. And I think that pretty much completes all our interviews recently, you know, everyone, we've taken care of everybody. I think so. We interviewed a lady named Barbara Kesslerling today, and I will make a call to her and see if she's interested in two other positions that we might have in the roundtable. Alright, next item on the agenda, Eagle Scout proclamation of Joshua Clardy Rushworth, and I think his brother was eagled a couple years ago. Is there a motion to approve the proclamation of Joshua? I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Troop six, all in favor?
Aye.
And also, the Eagle Scout Court of Honor upcoming for Hunter McRee, sorry, is there a motion to approve? I'll make a motion. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Doylestown Township audit proposals 2015, 16, and 17. There's a memo that is in our packet from Mr. Wallace.
Yes, Mr. Wallace's memo is recommending that we go with Major Mastro.
Who's our current auditor.
Their current, their, the current, and their proposal submitted was the most reasonable proposal submitted.
Is there a motion to approve the Mastro as the auditor for 2016? Major Mastro, sorry.
They've actually.
15, 16, and 17. 17, sorry, my bad. I'll make that motion, thank you.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Ken. Thompson agreement on the warehouse, warehouse on the property.
If I can, by way of background, when the board approved the, I guess, the Toyota or perhaps BMW agreement or land development, there was an old warehouse that was part of the prior owner's facilities that had a non-conforming setback. And they, of course, can maintain that setback, they're not ready at this point to do any construction there, but they want to get rid of the eyesore of the warehouse, so they're asking the township to agree that for a period of ten years that they'll be able to maintain the setback, even if they tear the building down. Otherwise, the building sits and it doesn't do anybody any good. And they said, they may not do anything there, they just want the right to be able to maintain that setback for a ten-year period. I would say that the Thompson folks are good neighbors and good folks to the township, so I think Stephanie and I have no particular problem with it, as long as the board doesn't.
I don't have any problems, it's a fair request.
Well, is there, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the agreement, yes.
I'll make that motion.
Alright. I'll second, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you. Traffic Advisory Committee concerns, we have a memo here from Mr. Shiner. Mr. Shiner is here. Self-explanatory, please come up and speak it.
You have a couple slides in your packet too.
Two slides. Let me give a little, little bit of a history update first. The committee was actually formed in 2005. There was originally eight committee members, one per voting district. I think actually the actual resolution says seven, but it went up to eight when we. I think actually the actual resolution says seven, but it went up to eight when we subdivided one of the voting districts. During most of this year, we've only had six members. We've not, we've had between one and two openings most of the year. And reality is, is that the attendance, just even getting six people together sometimes has been a challenge. So we've, a couple meetings, we didn't even have a quorum. So in general, when the issues come in, they either come in from the website, or they come in directly to the police force. And we kind of have a two-way split of issues coming in. Most of the issues, I think, are very operational and should be handled, you know, more routinely than what they have been. They've been really coming to the committee. And in general, probably should be acted on in a quicker fashion, especially since we can't always, you know, meet the next month, we don't always have a meeting the next month, or we don't have a quorum. So they end up, you know, languishing several months before we get an answer. I think they should be addressed quicker, and this would probably help it. What we want to do is refocus the committee on an educational, more an educational role. Kind of, you know, put some educational videos up on the website, on the Doylestown Township website. We want to look at the traffic data even more deeply than we currently have to date, and try to determine a better way to present that to the residents versus the way it is now, which is very hard to digest unless you're familiar with it. In this way, we can educate people on some of the concerns that they routinely voice. Most of the complaints we've been getting in the last year, year and a half, have all been about speeding issues that in general are not reality. We look at the speed data, we've found that in most cases, they're not valid concerns because the speeds are right on target or are pretty close. So we haven't had a lot of issues that I, like I said, are more than operational. So what we'd like to do is reduce the committee to three members from the current eight, but like I said, we're really running with six. And we'd like to start that next year, and we're looking for approval of that. Good news is, we have, of the six members, we already have one person that's not going to be renewing. We already have two people that would, would, you know, would need to get off mainly because of other commitments. So we probably are naturally going to, you know, go down to a three-person level anyway.
This is going to be my question, who do you have for year one? Those three?
Myself, Doug, what's his last name?
Doug Brown.
Yeah. And I'm just trying to think of who the other person, who else is, there's some.
Some, Carol.
Carol, yeah, because Carol was up for renewal, I'm not sure if she's renewed. So, yeah.
If the board was inclined, you'd have to adopt a new resolution to modify a couple of things. Number one, reduce the membership. Number two, you'd have to deviate from the old one per voting district and just make it township-wide. As far as the mission, I think that's kind of a, it's kind of just a general discussion, it's not a resolution issue.
Yeah, and I revised that, because we, what we've been doing is using Google to, instead of having one per voting district, so people are familiar with the area of that voting district. I mean, that was, in 2005, that's probably the way you had to do it. But now, we, most of the time, we just pull up Google, we look at the intersections, we look at whatever is needed, and we were able to make good determinations just using Google. You know, most of the time, we don't even, you know, we might not even have a person from that district, even on the board. So, on the committee, excuse me. So it's worked well.
Is the board inclined to revise the, the actual formation and function? Well, the function is not going to change so much as the formation of the.
Yes.
The configuration of the Traffic Advisor Committee. All right, so let's, let's move.
Just need a consensus, and I'll do the resolution, and you can adopt it, you know, at the reorder meeting or something like that.
That's perfect. We all agree?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good.
All right, so we'll, we'll revise accordingly, it'll be up in, in January for reorganization, you think?
I'll have a plan.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Yeah, you can have it.
It'll be easier.
There you go. Thank you very much. All right, and then we have a resignation. Unfortunately, Kevin Green from the Traffic Advisor Committee. Is there a motion to accept his resignation? I mean, his resignation?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Zoning hearing board application for the Goodman properties at 1662 Easton Road.
This is a sign of your shopping center, they want to add more space on their sign and more tenants and things. I would leave this matter to the zoning hearing board. I think they can dispose of it pretty easily.
I agree.
Okay. All right, so do it. All right, Township Managers' Appointment Agreement. We've all had an opportunity to see the revised agreement, yes?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve, to accept the agreement?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You? Managers on. Okay, DTMA budget, is, we only need to acknowledge receipt? We acknowledge receipt?
Yes.
No, thank you very much.
Everybody reseeded it, right? I've seen that.
Okay, I missed something here. Next item, the Doylestown Township final budget. It's due advertised, there's a, I feel like you can speak to it, Stephanie.
They should be putting up a little PowerPoint for everyone as well, just so you can see. But we have for you this evening, our final budget. And I would say that the key takeaways with regards to the, the budget for 2016 are pretty straightforward. I think the most important thing is, is the fact that the board started the budget process very early in the spring with Ways and Means Committee, and I think that was very helpful because it allowed the board and Ways and Means and the staff to focus not only on 2016, but a five-year look. And so we were looking at that 16 to 20. That helps us minimize surprises in the future and what we can expect because we have that information. We had numerous reviews, which I think added in good discussion on pros and cons in our various meetings that we held. I think the final review of the budget, we were able to glean out from there over $135,000 from our original preliminary proposal to the final as presented. And I think the positive results, which are very helpful for us, is that we were able to reach a four-year contract with the police department earlier this year. We are able to provide the needs of the ambulance corps serving our community. And I think the biggest takeaway from the 2016 budget will be a focus on infrastructure improvements. As we all know, we have an aging infrastructure, not only nationally, but here in Doylestown Township, and we do our best to keep up on that. But as we saw from our road inspection and the discussions we've had with our Director of Operations and our Road Superintendent, we need to do more in the area of roadwork. And so this budget will allow us to do that. We will be able to increase road repair in 2016 from the average three miles of roads that we typically do to five miles per year. And the most important thing, I think, and we've worked very closely with Ken Snyder, our roads and bridge liaison from the board, is that we're including the engineering necessary to work on the Chapman Road Bridge replacement. As the board knows, in the last two years, we've made significant improvements, and the end result is that the ultimate replacement of that bridge is coming. And so we have that money in the budget to do that. I know the result is that there's a slight tax increase for a half mil that's specifically geared towards our roads and eventually our bridges as well, and an eighth of a mil increase for our ambulance services. But I believe that will result in better services for our community. Our overall revenue anticipation for 2016 will be $12,776,396. We will be using reserves of $1,209,905. We will have expenses of anticipation of $13,979,367. And we anticipate by this time next year, we will have a fund balance of $4,437,406. Our budget will go from 10.25 to 10.875, which is a 0.625 increase. At our last meeting, we presented to the board the cuts. It seemed like the board was pleased with the reductions that we made. We did have to make one adjustment since we reviewed that with you on the first, and that is the special police services, we reviewed that with the chief again, and that is going to remain at the budgeted amount. So we'll have a savings of $8,000, we have cuts of $131,900, so a net result improvement of $139,900 overall. And in your information, I know Mrs. Lyons had indicated the last meeting about keeping the, keeping the HRA cards. There are funds available should the board so choose to keep that available. And there is additional memo providing information requested from Mr. Colallo as well as Mr. Snyder. You have my memo as well as a spreadsheet that we put together of information we gathered from other municipalities. And that is where we stand at this point.
Okay. Any discussion from the board? Thanks, Stephanie.
You're very welcome.
And I'd like to say, Ways and Means, Ken Snyder and your staff, and this board's work.
And Wallace.
Ken Snyder, Ken Snyder and Ken Wallace and your staff. Everybody worked really hard on this budget.
Yeah.
And I'm very, very impressed.
Yeah, I'll concur with that also, Lee, too, starting from Lee to the staff, and also, Ken, you know, I just want to commend you for the way you kind of timed out the budget process and really, you know, took the helm on.
Don't give him all the credit.
Well, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just saying, it was, it was definitely a team effort, you know, from Stephanie to Lee to Ken, you know, so, good job.
All right, yeah, everyone, everyone had a big part of it, so, thank you. I really appreciate it. All right, so beyond that, now discussion, we have two points of discussion, we're ready to prove it. Is the, are the HRA cards in? I would say they are. Is there a motion? Is there, I move for that, to me?
I'll second that.
Okay. Can we vote on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I rejoice to say that the memo and the presentation was excellent. I, I was very impressed. I like to say that publicly because occasionally I'm, I'm critical, but I thought you did an excellent job.
Thank you. All right.
Motion to approve the final budget?
I want to, yes, let's, let's entertain, I'll put out there a motion to approve the final budget unless there's more discussion on the budget itself.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Awesome. Thank you very much, everybody. All right, now I really want to thank you.
You have one more thing to do.
Fix the mileage.
Fix the mileage.
That's right.
All right.
Did we have the corrected resolution?
Yes, you have the correct resolution, and that would be the 10.68, 10.875 mils.
Is there a motion to fix the rate at 10.875 mils?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I would, just for clarification, that'll be about $25 a year, average.
Average, based on.
Each household, I'm sorry.
Yeah, for you.
The average assessment for a homeowner is anticipated.
Each property would be about $25 a year increase.
That is correct, Mr. Collo.
All right, next item on the agenda is the Treasurers' Report for December 15, 2015. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the Bills list, December 15, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, excellent. Doylestown Township offices are going to be closed Friday, December 25th for Christmas, and Friday, January 1st for New Year's. And we're going to next meet on Monday, January 4th at 4:00 for reorganization.